All the words of the Board of Selectmen meeting of January fifth, this page, not this page, twenty twenty four. If you join me in.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty second.
Can everybody talk at once?
Anybody? Well, I'm looking for approval of a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty second.
I was just reading this level, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty second.
Would you like to second?
Well, I don't know, I wasn't there.
All right, I will second. All in favor? Oh, any discussion? There are none? All in favor? Aye, I'm staying. There we go. Thank you very much. Um, moving on, present to speak, is anybody here present to speak? Uh, let's start with you, Michelle.
Michelle Dusset Cunningham, I'm gonna read a letter that was sent to the selectman earlier today. It has come to the attention of the Wellington Democratic Town Committee that about eight AM on Monday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, the Wellington Board of Selectmen inappropriately conducted public business at an illegal meeting without the required twenty-four hour advanced special meeting notification to the public and to the public. First electman Peter Tanaka and selectman Matt Clark, both Republicans, met with the town business manager Donald Latensis at town offices to discuss the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget. Selectman Andy Marco, the Democratic endorse board member, was later called in to join the meeting toward the end about an hour later. After being alerted to the transgression, a hastily called second special meeting agenda was filed with the town clerk at ten thirty AM on Monday up for a meeting at eleven AM Tuesday, January thirtieth, and minutes were filed with the town clerk at one PM Tuesday. The agenda did not state any location for the meeting, and the meeting indeed did not take place, although the one sentence minutes state the meeting um, did happen, the budget was discussed, and all three selectmen voted to adjourn at noon. First electments set up and execution, the first meetings set up violated the Connecticut Freedom of Information and Open Meetings laws, specifically Connecticut General Statute, section one dash two twenty five, which is the meetings of government agencies are to be public, recording of votes, scheduling an agenda of certain meetings to be filed and posted on websites, including notice for special meetings and executive sessions. The second meeting was an obvious attempt to obscure the illegal timing and warning of the first meeting, or lack of warning for the first meeting, and also swept the entire Board of Selectmen and the town clerk's office into the subterfuge. It is a violation of Connecticut General Statute, section seven dash twelve B, where the boards of selectmen shall keep accurate record of all minutes of their meetings, which shall be available for public inspection at reasonable times. The Democratic Town Committee condemns these actions, which results resulted in barring the public from participating in the open process of how tax dollars are spent, excluding town employees from debate about town budgets that affect them directly or indirectly, sidelining other town officials such as the Board of Finance, Board of Education, and others entrusted with town financial oversight from witnessing debate, compromising the town business manager, town clerk, and first electmen's administrative assistant to participate in or falsify documents of an illegal meeting, and undermining the overall public trust in public in town government. It's of particular concern to us when first selectman Tanaka and selectman Clark specifically ran for election on a central promise of bringing open and transparent government to the town. No meetings of this nature with an ensuing act of cover up have been noted during the last seven Board of Selectmen terms. In two thousand and nine, however, Wellington was called before the State Freedom of Information Commission due to several instances of two selectmen meeting in private to conduct town business outside of regular Board of Selectmen meetings. Since a new selectman had just taken office and vowed not to repeat the practice, further action was not taken. However, you should be aware that our town has hit the FOIA radar before now, and we should learn from that history. We are not making an official report of these recent trainings aggressions to the Secretary of State or FOIA Commission at this time. However, we will be vigilant about future flouting of statutes or ordinances guiding our town's public practices. For now, we ask that the next regular Board of Selectmen meeting, the first selectman apologize publicly for these missteps, offer details of any specific matters discussed in the January twenty ninth budget workshop with the business manager, correct the falsified town records, and going forward, make a statement to practice open, lawful, and fair play in conducting Wellington town business. We also strongly suggest that there be a FOIA training for elected and appointed officials and for town staff. You may contact the FOIA director, and his email and contact number is in the letter. You are not new to town government, even though you might be newly elected selectmen. You've attended hundreds of meetings in this town. You know better, and you should do better.
Thank you. Uh, just one thing, can I, 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 I plan on addressing the current correspondence, if you don't mind, rather than right this minute. Erica?
Erica Waschinsky. I want to address the meeting of the Board of Selectmen held Monday, January twenty ninth, at the Town Office Building between the Board of Selectmen and the Business Manager to discuss the twenty four, twenty five town budget. This is the first meeting known to discuss the budget, and I'm disappointed that the meeting was not warned making it an illegal meeting. The budget process is a critical function of the Board of Selectmen. It's imperative that the public have access to these conversations where you discuss how our tax dollars will be spent. Instead, you met in secret, and when made aware of your error, you then posted an agenda for Tuesday, January thirtieth at eleven AM for an in-person only meeting with no location given. You then posted minutes on the meeting more the same day, saying the meeting was held at eleven AM, lasted for an hour, and that all three selectmen were in attendance. This meeting never occurred. Instead of admitting your error and working to do better, you worked to cover your own tracks, hoping no one would notice. We all make mistakes, but acknowledging them and learning from them is the only acceptable way to earn the trust of your constituents. Mr. Tanaka, you did the opposite. On December eighteenth, the Board of Selectmen held a meeting listed as a hybrid meeting, while there was no phone or internet at the Town Office Building. The meeting continued without access by the public to attend this hybrid meeting. Yet your minutes show that a hybrid meeting was held and attended by residents via Zoom. This is false. Additionally, the Board of Selectmen in the January second, twenty twenty four meeting did not properly warn and vote on the call of a town meeting. You simply read the questions and voted, while there was no action on each individual question for this board to take. The minutes simply noted a town meeting tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty third, twenty twenty four. The board did not properly call the town meeting. A date, time, and location should be voted as part of that call. And as a result, the town meeting held on January twenty third, twenty twenty four was not properly warned and executed, in my opinion. Therefore, all actions that took place may not be valid, and at the very least, are in question. You have the infrastructure and technology to record all meetings, even if a meeting is strictly held in person. I would encourage you to record and share these meetings with the public. Transparency is something I heard from both Mr. Tanaka and Mr. Clark over and over. Yet, when given the chance to lead our community, you chose to show the exact opposite. In the first two months of your administration, these are just the known examples of lack of transparency. I've said many times, I want your administration to be successful. I said it to you here in this building. You sat on the Board of Finance for many years, other selectmen have sat on a board or commission. You are all aware, well aware and familiar with the Freedom of Information Act and meeting requirements. But your actions thus far do not give me confidence that you will uphold those requirements and statutory obligations. I implore you to immediately attend, or better yet, host a Freedom of Information Act training and invite all board and commission members to attend. Mr. Tanaka, as the first selectman and CEO of the town, you set an example. And moving forward, you should do all you can to ensure meetings are open to the public, following statutory requirements and proper protocols.
Thank you. I will also, that is, as there was very similar uh, discussion in that is as in Miss Cunningham's, Miss Cunningham Dusset, is it?
Yeah, I think that right.
To sit, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the room? Mr. Oh.
I can go actually, Jim.
Jim Marshall?
Uh, good evening, everybody. James Marshall, Fisher Hill Road. Um, I won't play up with the point, because Michelle and Erica just touched on it already, but I was, um, just speaking up to note uh, the disappointment in the July, in the January thirtieth, uh, posting of the meeting, um, without any chance for remote attendance, um, as a special meeting at eleven AM during a workday. Um, and then again, the lack of sufficient minutes, uh, just saying the budget was discussed. Um, but the supplemental information provided by both Michelle and Erica, I think, shed some light uh, or further light on that. And I would just urge, um, you all moving forward, particularly in a tough budget year, um, to really be cognizant of open discussions, um, regarding all of the budgetary concerns of the town. Um, the people have a right to hear your deliberations, um, and understand the budget that you're gonna present for the Board of Finance, um, in a few weeks. Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you, Jim. Christina?
Hi, um, I am here to, um, talk about the CIP committee. Um, and just to let you know that I've been inviting you all to the meetings, um, that have been happening every, every week pretty much now, um, and they're gonna be concluding in the next few weeks. But I just wanna implore you all to come to the meetings if you possibly can. Um, the plan that we are working on, that we will ultimately make as a recommendation becomes part of your budget, and it's very, so it's very much all of your interest. Um, like now, um, what is happening in there? Um, so, so I just want you to, to, to try to all come if you can. And this Wednesday, we are hearing from the fire departments. Um, they're asking for funds to build two firehouses with, with estimates close to twelve million dollars. And then next week is the Board of Education. Um, we've been working, uh, well, they've been working on their plan to repair the schools, and it's looking like they're gonna need several million dollars over the next few years, and what, what projects happen in what years is still being worked out, but it's definitely, um, the need for money is there, and, um, we, we need to plan for it, so, um, it, whether or not we are giving serious thought to bonding, um, as soon as next year, um, or, um, or when, when we, like, all of that is being discussed now, so it needs to be somewhat determined over the next month. Um, so, so the sooner everyone can become part of the conversation, the better, I think. Um, and I, and then I, I just also wanted to comment on what, um, we, we just heard about, which is, and, and I, and I just wanna say, I know it's very difficult to organize these meetings. Um, and with, with, with days and days in advance trying to set things up. Um, and that, and unfortunately, that's, that's part of what it is, and, um, it, you, you, but you have to work with that, so, um, I, I think you all can, um, just get, get into a better habit, and, um, and I hope that the budget, uh, workshops start soon, because your budget's gonna be due very soon as well, so, and the CIP number that we come up with is part of your budget, so, um, hopefully, we'll be seeing that soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Christina. Ralph?
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Oh, good. Maybe, um, I have had separate conversations with both, uh, Mr. Latinsic, um, not, Mr. Tanaka, excuse me, sorry, Pete, uh, and Mr. Clark, as well as, uh, Andy, about this fire department building committee, yeah, which I probably will, will, uh, accept, uh, appointment to, but before this committee does anything, um, I think we need a formal charge. Uh, in my opinion, that committee should consist of equal representation from the fire departments, as well as the public and taxpayers. Uh, specifically, not an odd number. I would rather, I, I would like to see four and four, two from each department, four from the public. The reason for an even number, in my humble opinion, is it's, has a tendency to force consensus, because you're going to need, um, a majority of five to pass or to make any decisions. Uh, and for this way, one interest isn't, isn't dominating another. Um, I also have concerns uh, how, depending on the charge, this committee will possibly overlap with the Emergency Services Efficiency Committee. Because if we start talking buildings, we will get into operations. If, once we get into operations, we'll be getting into policy. And I'm not so sure policy belongs with the building committee, but it may be unavoidable. Uh, I'd like you to consider these points, and before anything moves forward, uh, please take them under consideration. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ralph. Anybody else online? Stephanie, you have something there?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, on the FOI, Stephanie Summers, for why, right? Uh, I just wanted to say on the, uh, FOI concern that, uh, Pete, in no way do I think you intended this, but, um, but in the, it, an impact that you have as CEO of the town and as supervisor in the town hall is that it's, it's already an inherently uneven relationship with those who report to you. So by asking, you know, the administrative assistant and, uh, to you know, to falsify a document if that's what happened, and to, uh, ask the town clerk to post it legally and distribute it to the public, you're putting their integrity on the line, too. And I don't think you necessarily would think of that, but I would urge you to think about all the wrinkles to these kinds of actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to correspondence. So, the first correspondence I have is from, uh, Governor Lamont. Uh, we're going to be having a, our judge of probate is, uh, must retire upon reaching the age of seventy, so we will be having a special election along with one of the coming elections this fall for Judge of Probate. Um, second thing is, I'd like to address is the letter that, that I received from the, the Wellington Democratic Town Committee. Unfortunately, I didn't get it till much later this afternoon, but I did get it. First thing I'd like to say to everybody who spoke in tonight is, I sincerely apologize. I take this a hundred percent upon myself. I did not file the minutes in time. Uh, I filed the agenda in time, and, uh, I, I do wanna note that in contrast to this letter, uh, Selectman Marco was invited early. He, uh, wasn't there at the beginning just because he showed up late, not because he wasn't invited. At that meeting, we made no motions, had no votes, and discussed primarily our, our philosophies on how to adjust the, the budget. And that was it. Uh, we, we made no, no decisions on the budget during that meeting. It is my error that, that we filed the agenda in minutes late. Like you said, I, that, that's a hundred percent on me, and I did that just to make sure that the town knew that, that a meeting had happened. I, I don't know how to apologize for it, so I'll leave it at that. Um, next off, I think that's all the correspondence we have, uh. So, before we move to the first selection status report, I'd like to add two new pieces of, two new items to the budget. Uh, item E under new business, the fire department furnace, and item F, uh, additional committees, formation of additional committees. Can I have a motion?
Do you want a time?
Yes, we will do them one at a time. If you wanna do F and G. Right, that's the two different committees, fire department and tricentennial.
So, on the motion that we, um, add fire department furnace, um, two new are in the business under eight. I second that motion.
Can I get a motion for the committees?
You have a motion on the floor.
Pardon me?
You have a motion on the floor.
Oh, a motion on the floor, discussion?
Discussion.
All in favor? Aye. Adding the furnace. Now moving to the next motion.
Adding emergency, I, I make a motion to add the, adding the, uh, Emergency Services Facilities Committee to the agenda. I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to add a tricentennial committee?
I make a motion to add tricentennial committee, G to, um, business eight.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So, let's move to selectman report. Uh, first thing is, there was an accident, uh, yesterday that took out a pole, uh, by, uh, Phelps Corner, Phelps Plaza. Uh, there was a large discussion on, on social media on why the road was still closed. Uh, after discussion with the state police, it turns out that they had clocked a vehicle in Ashford at a hundred and two miles an hour, followed it through town, and it didn't make the corner. The, uh, subject was arrested for uh, reckless driving, unsafe passing, passing in an old passing zone, failure to drive in a proper lane, failure to obey a traffic control signal, and reckless endangerment, and was bonded out on ten thousand dollar shirt. Uh, so, that information is for those who are interested in that crash. There is a number of vegetation, um, abatement issues in town, and I can't find my stuff from. I apologize. Uh, the EverSource will be doing quite a bit of vegetation, uh, cutback trees along their power lines, I believe. Sixteen out of eighteen miles of, of, of backbone, uh, power lines are gonna be cleared, and like thirty miles or fifty, some thirty miles of eighty miles or something like that, off site. Uh, what I'm doing is I'm encouraging residents, when they come to have you sign to allow them to, to clear the vegetation. Please allow them to clear the vegetation. Also, the State Siting Committee is putting in a five, I believe it's a gigawatt, storage, power storage facility on the town line. Uh, it's primarily in Wellington, uh, along Village Hill Road, right at the uh, town line with Stafford. Uh, they have been working on that. There should be noise and light, uh, remediation projects to go with that. Uh, we, as a town, have no input into the sighting council. I do have a map available of where it's being posted, if anybody's interested. Um, the Conservation Commission, uh, regards to the last meeting, when we passed a motion to have me sign the uh, easement on the metal lane forestry project that was passed through legal. Uh, I got it back from the building department. It's been signed and, and turned over. The other thing that's, that's come up is, uh, members of the Conservation Commission have asked that we look at the forestry, forest part of the Fenton Ruby Project to get a, uh, forestry expert in. A tree guy, and, uh, to, to see if, if, if the town should be, uh, using, u- utilizing the, the natural, uh, resources we have in that area to the town's benefit, what the pluses and minuses of clearing trees is, uh, or habitat, et cetera. And that's all I have for that. Moving on to the Public Works. Public Works has had, quite the last couple of weeks, they're, uh, patching and grading roads, the, the gravel roads in town due to the thaw, frost cycles and rain, built up quite a few, uh, mud pits. Uh, which caused large enough ruts, it was making some of our roads impassable. So they've been doing that, they've been patching holes, they installed, uh, signs on Pulster Road for no through trucks. The State Traffic Commission has authorized that, so I, I guess they authorized the signs. We paid to have them printed and posted. Uh, they've been picking up wood around town, taking care of their trucks, and doing shop work and work within the town office building here. They've done a temporary kicks on the drainage problem out by the building department, so hopefully we keep the carpet dry in there.
What was that fix, what did they do?
What they did was they, we've taken out the tree out there so that we can get into the roof structure.
Yeah.
Pull that away from the building when the weather gets better. Also, it turns out about three quarters of the total area of the roof drains down one drain pipe right into a hole there where it goes into the foundation, so they raised the, the drain pipe and put in a, a PVC pipe so it'll run downhill instead of getting trapped in that hole. And then there's gonna be further remediation in the spring. I, I checked to make sure that, I, I checked with the tree warden on that, so.
Thank you.
Um, other vegetation. We've also received a, uh, report from, uh, the train people, right, that they're gonna be doing.
I didn't say anything from the train people.
Well, I thought that's what the big envelope you got was, train people.
Maybe it was. Maybe I should have looked at that bigger envelope.
Okay. The, the, they'll be clearing vegetation by the tracks so the trains can get through. They may be using some kind of herbicide as well.
Uh, maybe.
So.
I'll look at it, I'll let you.
Sorry, I didn't look at it yet.
That doesn't, that's probably not for trees.
Not much we can do about it, but it's good to know what's going on in case people ask. Moving on to new business, we need to appoint an agent for the elderly. So I move to appoint Karen Cote. I'm gonna mispronounce it, Cote, as an a, as agent for the elderly for the town of Wellington, effective January sixth, twenty twenty four, February sixth. Thank you. Twenty twenty four, expiring February fifth, twenty twenty six. Uh, I did it for a two-year term, and we can renew it at that time, or the next administration can.
Oh, do you have to be to be elderly?
Need a second on the motion.
Uh, yeah, first I need a second, then you can ask a question.
I second that.
All right, any discussion?
How old do you have to be to be elderly?
I don't know, but I think I'm there.
You need to prove, you need to prove the thing. Make a motion to approve.
I did, I made the motion. He seconded it. Now we're discussing, now we're discussing.
I guess, oh, I, how old do you have to be to be considered elderly? Fifty-five, sixty-five? I'm not, I'm not gonna joke. I really don't know the answer.
I don't know either, but we have a senior housing authority and.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just kinda curious.
It's getting closer every day.
How's that? Well, I hear ya.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
She wants the job?
She wants the job.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, nothing, man.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
She's actually been, uh, handling the, uh, senior housing situation in there for a couple of weeks now, so it's best that we have her as that.
Hmm.
Um, the next thing up is the Economic Development Commission appointment. We had a candidate who was being vetted by our, uh, uh, buildings director, Mike Demoto. Uh, Mike didn't get back to us today, so I'm recommending we table this, I moved that we table it until the next week. Do I get a second?
I second that.
Any other discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Tax refunds.
That out loud?
Yes, that was your outside.
I'm so sorry. It's been a long day.
I've never done that.
Long day.
I, uh, so, we don't have that, that many of them. So I moved that, uh, I refund property taxes and interest in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Be made to, uh, the above-named taxpayer. Uh, Diane.
Diane Kaczynski.
Kaczynski. Living Trust and, uh, David F. Lucy Rose, um, for a refund of excess payments.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we, uh, refund the property taxes in interest in the amount of two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Be made to Diane Kaczynski again. Um, for refund of excess payments.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Let me get these signed before I forget. I move that we refund, uh, refund of property taxes and interest in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents be made to again Diane Kaczynski for a refund of excess payments, uh, did I say the two hundred and thirty-six dollars and, oh, sixty-two cents? Let me start that one again. I moved that we refund the property taxes and interest in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents be made to Diane Kaczynski Living Trust for a refund of excess payments.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wish I could say aye at the same, at the same time.
Oh, I got one more here. Well, this is just the application. This.
I think it's the, it was an electronic payment, I think. She put it in with all the other ones.
Yeah, I don't. Oh, okay, here we go, I see it now. It's just a different format, I apologize. I move that we refund property taxes and the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents be made to Loretta LLC of Pomona, California. Uh, in accordance with the position, provisions of Connecticut State Statute Sections twelve dash eighty-one, twenty, twelve dash one twenty-four, twelve dash one twenty-five, twelve dash one twenty-six, twelve dash one twenty-seven, twelve dash one twenty-seven A, twelve dash one twenty-eight, and twelve dash one twenty-nine.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
What's the taxable interest of? Just curious, what's? Well, why is California company?
Why are we, why are they paying us?
Why would they pay taxes?
They wouldn't pay on property or something, or?
They, um, just curious, sounds weird.
They could be, uh.
They could be a, uh, like, name holder or something.
That form doesn't really explain what they're.
It might just, hang on just a minute.
Peter.
Yes.
This is Janice, so.
Hi, Janice.
For, uh, one of the escrow companies that inadvertently paid someone else's bill. It was supposed to go to a different branch. They applied it to, uh, property here in town that I have to refund back to them because the homeowner actually paid it.
Thank you, thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Yes, they, uh, so we had a motion. You had a question?
Yep, that was a discussion.
That was all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I can sign it. I didn't even see Janice up there.
She's looking.
All right.
Good thing she did.
Hmm, nice to know. Um, our monthly report from Troop C. Uh, total traffic stops, one hundred and one onsite DUIs, two, three arrests, three misdemeanor summons, fifty-nine infractions, nine written warnings and thirty verbal warnings. They had, uh, twenty criminal investigations and the whole side of this is cut off. So they had, uh, working arrests. Non-reportable matters, two hundred and three. I'm trying to get a better feeling from Troop C breakdown on what some of these numbers mean, they seem reticent in providing that outlook, but.
We talked earlier, one of our previous meetings about, um, having a meeting with Troop C in person with their representative, any, any progress on that?
Uh, I wrote toward today and I have not yet heard back. I know she was off last night at midnight because, well, I was trying to get information on the intersection. I was not happy with Troop C's response this morning, so we're gonna be discussing that as well. Um, next up. Fire Department Furnace, I received a email from the Chairman of the Board of Finance that, uh, the fire department has a uh, furnace issue, they've got three, this is at Wellington Hill, they've got three furnaces in the building. They just went through a recent inspection, one of them has a cracked heat exchanger which is releasing carbon monoxide into the building. So they've shut it down before they shut set off all the carbon monoxide detectors that rock primarily, um, and it looks like the, the cost to repair that furnace may be in the vicinity of nine thousand dollars. Uh, they've gone, uh, they've requested money from the Board of Finance and been told to go back out and get through bids. And, uh, it needs to be o- oversight needs to be from the Board of Selectmen's Office. So this is the discussion, I'd like to move give, uh, Fire Department authorization to move forward obtaining their bids.
Sure, absolutely.
So, that's, that, let's, let's make a motion, I may, I move that we, uh, authorize Fire Department in, in, in going forward to receive bids.
To, to receive bids.
Receive bids, yeah, then it goes through, uh, the Fire, uh, Board of Finance, so, and so you don't just get to spend the money.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion?
Discussion?
So they have, there's three furnaces?
They have three furnaces, one of them is the bay.
They went through the inspection process?
Yes. The, the, the yearly inspection of their furnaces and one of them's, one of them's relatively new, they just had it replaced, one of them's got it.
That's the ones in the bay.
Yeah, the ones in the bay. Yeah. And then this is the one for the kitchen and the closet that contains all the, uh, uh, computer equipment.
And the rest, there are, the rest. The day room and the radio room between the bay and the hall.
Yeah. Then they have a third one for.
The hall, the third one's the hall.
Yeah. So what they're doing is they're running the other two warm right now. Fans and open doors, I guess.
Okay, so what's the next, um?
So what we need to do is authorize, the motion is authorizing the looking.
That's all smoke.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one, which way did we do it, by tricentennial or?
The state fire department.
All right. I'd like to move that we create a, a Emergency Services Facilities Committee. You'll commit, I'm gonna read this whole thing.
No, I.
I move that we create a, uh, an Emergency Services Facilities Committee which will consist of eight members consisting of representatives from the Wellington Hill Fire Department and the Wellington Fire Department Number One. One, uh, uh, it actually, it'll be two members from the community with minimal or no ties to either fire department and preferably with some capital planning or construction experience and a non-voting, no, and, oh, and a non-voting, non-committee member or reporting secretary. The charge of the committee will be to engage both fire departments, fire marshal, selectman, emergency management, police and similar agencies to understand current and future programmatic needs that might drive facility needs. Review of previous studies for information related to service needs that affect facilities' needs. Review previous studies for information related to condition and effectiveness of our current facilities. Determine and recommend engagement of consultants or similar professionals who assist in the following. One, collect and evaluate data on historical emergency services, public safety needs based on type, severity and location. Pursue any available forecasts of future emergency services, public safety trends or demands based on type, severity and location. C, assert any uh, opportunities to meet programmatic needs of the town without unneeded duplication of resources, programs, et cetera. Determine D. Determine the best locations of resources to address those needs as effectively as possible using currently available town and department properties or alternate locations known as station location study. Five, recommend use of currently available funds to further design efforts for both short and long-term projects. By A, continuation of, uh, Wellington Hill Fire Department design work for twenty-five Old Farms Road. B, recovery of short-term use of Wellington Fire Department One Station thirteen at, uh, four twenty-six River Road, continuation of Wellington Hill, right, Wellington. This is not right. Wellington Fire Department One, design for work, design work for Station thirteen of four twenty-six River Road. I'm sorry, there's a typo here. That I just got caught up in it. Six, develop and recommend an emergency services facility pla- uh, plan, ESFP or building plan of major capital items for all related services including pricing estimates. Seven, seek information on and support pursuit of funding including but not limited to donations, grants, state and federal funds and local funds. Eight, seek design contracts for any portions of the ESFP that are approved. Nine, seek construction contracts for any portions of the ESFP that are approved. Ten, communicate progress of committee work through public meetings, outreach forums, et cetera, as appropriate throughout the term of the committee. Eleven, provide assistance to and oversight of work in the town's name uh, to delivery of completed projects. Twelve, provide final report once committee's work is done or no further progress is expected. The terms for the members will end upon completion of the charge of the committee. We have, uh, currently three members of Wellington Hill, three members of Wellington, uh, One, and two members of the community on this committee. Pardon me?
You are ready now?
Yes, and I will name them.
Oh.
Just.
I, I didn't know.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I have, make my.
Should we?
Just make sure I read you right.
Yeah, should we?
I, I, I have proposed member now.
Should we second it first?
Yes, okay. I'll second, I second.
Any other discussion? Matt? You, you look like you wanna say something.
No, I'm, I'm, this is the first time I've seen this, so, um, my notes that I took just upon the initial reading that you made was that first of all, I think we have a need for, um, especially for Wellington One um, to upgrade and, and make sure we have a working fire station, I, yes, so.
That, that's what I think was.
Yeah.
That was one of the steps in here.
Right, uh, I think we had another, we had Ralph indicated that we prefer to have an equal number of, um, uh, town citizens and, uh, fire department members, um, on the committee.
Correct.
This is, I think, two, one-third, 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 I think, is that right?
No, it's, it's slightly less than one-third for it's for town representation.
And then, um, the last thing is and you can discuss each of these things, you know, I'm sure you guys have questions as well and stuff. But I don't understand this, or C, ascertain any opportunities to meet programmatic needs of the town without unneeded duplication of resources, programs, et cetera. You know, I'm not a, uh, an expert in, you know, how our town operates, its emergency facilities or anything like that.
Right.
But this seems, I've heard that this is an issue going back. So I'm not quite sure this has anything to do with buildings, uh, in my mind, this should be done beforehand, um, you know, not as part of a building committee. But that, these kind, that kind of, of issue should be resolved, um, separate from the building committee. That's, that's my observation.
Well, it's, it's things to be built into the building like, uh, training rooms and emergency operations centers. We don't need more than one emergency operation center, so we want it on building one and not two. And that's why both departments are involved. Uh, getting to Erica's question on, on coming up with committee members, I, I haven't done this solely on my own, I, I've, uh, worked directly with both fire chiefs and, uh, town people, so. I know I'm not supposed to, I probably shouldn't be looking at people to be on a committee, but I wanted to make sure our committee could be formed before I formed the committee, so. Uh, we've, we've got some, some members already in mind, uh, some volunteers including Ralph, which you probably heard at the beginning of this.
So is eight members the right number or?
Uh, I think that eight members is the right number, I personally, I, I, maybe some input on this, personally, I think that, that if you get a committee too large, that, that it.
They can become.
It becomes unwieldy.
That is true.
I was gonna, I was gonna go for six. But the fire department's requested eight.
Yeah, I like six a lot. A smaller committee is going to work, um, more likely to form consensus faster.
Yeah.
Um, and they center that experience, we want things to be quickly not, not drag on and on and on, and also you have less opportunity for factions to develop within the committee and stuff like that.
Right, well, I, I think you're right on that, the reason we went with six firefighters was because that way we could get the, the member of the department who is best at building in each department, the best, the member of the department that is the, uh, programmatic person, the person that, that's most active on committees, and then each chief, and that was at the fire department's request.
The recording secretary.
Yeah.
Would that be, would they be paid?
Uh, that, that's what we've done with the Emergency Services Efficiency Committee, is we, we paid them out of, uh, from the fire department funds, fire department's been paying for that, and I would suggest we do that again in this, this situation.
Yeah. So, it would only be two members of the town?
Yes.
That would be, um, having input.
Mm-hmm.
So, done? Is that? How many of the members of the fire departments that will be, right, not, the trailer, just how many would our town residents? Do they all live in town?
No.
Good. Just thinking aloud. I mean, so, so people that.
I think.
It's easier to spend, it's easier to spend money that's not yours.
Yes, so, um, four of the six are, plus the town members, so that's six out of eight are town residents. Okay, that's not too bad. Um. It's a pretty big animal. I do think to that, your question, I think forum kind of follows function if you're gonna have a building. That is going to be utilized by two departments and. Like, I think that, what you were talking about, I could see there, that's, that's the duplication.
Right.
I think that, I think I understand, that's what I understand.
I thought that is, as, you know, number of trucks and number of bays and apparatus at different departments and stuff. To my mind, that should, that should all be taken care of beforehand, and this is a building committee, so.
And it, I think it all ties together. Where's the building gonna go? What's gonna be in that building and the, okay. It's, there's all kinds around there, there's, there's so many variables there are. In this equation that it's, it. That's why I, I wanna form this committee is because it, it, I, I don't have the expertise.
No.
And, uh, so I wanna bring in the guys that do have the expertise. But it's a pretty serious chunk of change. You're talking below, you're probably talking like twenty million dollars?
No.
With everything?
No, right, right now, the current estimate is was eleven.
Eleven point five.
That's for a new, that's for a new building, but you also got two new buildings and repairs to the old ones, so.
Well, they.
The. One of the older ones is probably gonna have to be replaced and the other one would, as. I'm not saying the money shouldn't. Until we, we come out with findings from this, we won't know, but I think both these buildings will become property of the town and. And in talking with Wellington Hill, they'd be willing to turn over their current property at whatever is.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Thank you. And I knew it was close to twenty-five, over to the town to, to kind of, uh.
They are twenty-five, two new buildings, the churches are twenty-five.
Yes. They've got both sides of the street. To offset some of the expense. So that's, that's, that's what is another one of the variables would be. Pete, does this bend the law?
Uh, no.
How many people are on the school building committee? I know it's not exactly the same. How many people are on? Eleven. And school building committees, as I understand it, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, are different because education.
The number of people on them is.
No, no, no. Yeah, the number of people is different, because it's dependent on the town.
One by statute absolutely has to be identical.
Right, but that, that's not where I was going with numbers. I was going, uh, school building committees have special. Constraints and, and charges based on some state law.
That they have, the town has to have a, a building committee.
Has to have a building.
Has to have one. One member has to be of a certain experience by a newer state statute. The makeup was determined by the town, by the town's people at a town meeting.
Alright. And I, I, is, is it, I, no, I could have been steered wrong here, but I believe that, that. School building committees need to be brought by town meeting, but other committees do not. And I, I, I may be wrong in that.
To accept, if, you may, in order to accept the state funding. That absolutely is true. You have to follow certain steps, and one of those is by the legislative body of the town, which in our case is town meeting. Uh, leave my remarks for this committee to my opportunity to speak. If anything else I would have, it'd be my own opinion, I'll save that to my opportunity to speak, I'd like to speak.
Take, take the opportunity now if you don't mind.
Well, this is a significant committee. You, it's the first time you've discussed it publicly. You've added it to the agenda at your meeting tonight, not giving townspeople the opportunity to know you were going to discuss it. You've predetermined who's going to be on this. I've already heard from people within our community that a chairman has all but been decided. Mister, um, Mister Tullis told us that he spoke with each one of you and he'd be happy to accept an opportunity. You only want to love two townspeople. It's insignificant and rather concerning. It's just certainly not how we do business. I would encourage you to make sure you have what it needs for a committee, that it meets the needs of the town. This is significant dollars we would be talking about. I don't disagree that this is something that we need as a town. But it's no less important than this school building committee. It's important that you hear from taxpayers for you to create this and put on the people that you want. So that you can quickly get a consensus so that it doesn't drag off, so people can't form a faction. That's so the people can't decide for themselves that they think is needed based on. Based on the needs of the town. You're not, you're not looking to hear from what the taxpayers want and can afford. You're looking to push through what you think we need and what your, in my opinion, privately created committee wants. It just, it doesn't look, and so I would encourage you to make sure that there's, there's no other town, um. Rules that need to be followed, any other statutory rules, not that I know, but I never looked into a committee such as this, so I couldn't speak to whether a town meeting is required. Um, I would hope that.
I, 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 I did try to check into that with, with the town clerk. I didn't check with the lawyer.
Yeah.
I, I, your, your point's well taken.
Yeah.
Thank you for your expertise.
Again, it's something that's needed, but I don't think we have to do it. I, I repeat myself, as I said, even for myself, I had to take a step back before. We wanna do it right, not fast.
Yeah.
Um, and so take a look at this, maybe as a standpoint, and think about how people could have themselves considered to be on this. Without you already discussing it before you actually had an opportunity to bring it to townspeople.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Are you, is it okay to comment?
Sure.
Uh, because it's, it feels insular, and I think if you want a body that's gonna, gonna look toward the future and try to sort of bring a plan out of it. Um, it's, it's gotta have some real people on it, and I don't mean that they're not real people. I mean that you, who you're talking about. I mean, it's gotta have some people without all this stuff buried in of years of, of working the hardest. Emergency services people, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta have some citizens and some fresh perspective, I think. And, you know, really, the nature of a committee is that you send a delegate to represent fully. Not a person with every skill set to represent apartment, department. One and department hill, you know what I mean? You don't need everybody at the table from those two departments. Um, from every subset that you described. You need a really good representative and spokesperson. Who's in touch with their department, bringing it to the table.
Yeah, that's. That's what I was hoping by getting presidents and, and chiefs.
I mean, I feel like you've seen some of that frustration that the efficiency services committee.
Believe me, I have. Yeah, so thank you for your input and, uh.
Can, can we move to table and?
I was, I was about to do that very same thing, so I will second your movement to table.
Yeah, and, and I think, what, what, while we table, what, what will we think about? And what would we, what would be the, the, the things we wanna have happen before we talk about this again? Thank you for your participation. It was very, very helpful. Um, you know, I think there's an open issue of having to do with, with makeup. Um, there's also an open issue having to do with making sure that we're, we're, we're on, on target and information gathering from the public. And interested parties about how they want this to operate.
Okay.
A point of order, Mr. Selectman.
Yes.
Um, we seem to have opened the door to present to speak in the middle of the agenda. If that's gonna be okay, then I think you should offer that to everyone.
Oh, sure, by all means, uh, I see, I.
Can I finish? Just let me finish my point, please.
Okay.
Um, I think the, um, I think it has to be fairly offered to everybody, and I also think that. If the, if we're gonna start doing present to speak throughout the meetings, we should make sure we address that to the public. So they know that we're changing the way we comment on things, because that may be a valuable tool to members of the public if they know it is available. And also balance the risk of turning this into death by committee. Or death of a committee before it's a committee by committee.
Death of a committee by committee before it's a committee.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Your point is well taken. I have been saying at the beginning of each meeting, I didn't read off the whole thing tonight. That if people need to speak to a topic during the topic, they can. So, uh, that being said, would you like to add something else?
No, people have their hands, other people have their hands up before me, so I will, I will.
Okay. So let's start with Mr. Marshall.
Hi, thanks, gentlemen. I didn't wanna interrupt, I could have waited, but I appreciate the chance to speak now. Yeah, just, I, I would kind of follow Erica and Steph's comments as well, that I think you guys need to gestate on this a little bit as urgent. And as much of a good idea as I believe this to be. I, I also would urge you to consider that this really needs to be a committee or should be a committee that's, that has better representation by the community. Um, we already have an emergency efficiency committee. In town, the reality is this may be better served for an appointee of each department. Bringing forth recommendations or being the voice from the emergency efficiency committee from each department. Serving on this building committee, that you'll be best served by really focusing on people with. Industry experience, quite frankly. It's something that I think. People like Ralph, for example, if they had the ability to help guide even the emergency efficiency committee along the way. We'd be at a point with these departments where moving forward much faster. Um, so I appreciate the effort. I, I honestly think you need, I, I, the number eight may be right. But I, I don't think you need more than one at most from each department, possibly two. But at any rate, I wish you the best, but please do consider, there's a lot of ramifications and a lot of costs that's gonna go into this. And if you guys need any assistance, I'm always available. Don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Latinczus.
Good evening, Peter Latinczus, ninety-seventh Rask Road. Uh, I want to echo the sentiments in the room that I think broad public participation in such a committee would really be helpful to the fire departments and the community. One of the significant weaknesses of the school building committee was that it was virtually, uh. Composed of entirely educational community members, and those are all wonderful people. But, uh, it was also a weakness because they failed to connect with the community on, on important issues. So I, I hope you do gestate and have a, a committee composition that includes a, at least half the committee with members of the public at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I believe that, I'll, I'll come right back to you. I, uh, I wanted to give Mike another opportunity. If. Mike, you, you said that people had their hands raised ahead of you.
Yes, I'll, I'll keep it very brief. Uh, there's Mike McCoo, by the way. So, uh, I don't think, it's probably not a secret, I'll confirm, I've one of the, I'm one of the people who's, Pete has talked about being on the committee. Um, I think we have seen various different evolutions of the fire department's conversations. Both fire departments, Wellington one having somewhat of an emergent situation with their building up north on Route thirty-two. Wellington Hill coming to the Board of Finance at, at a recent meeting, looking to get their previously approved CIP allocation moved forward. And being told no, and some other things, and in all of those situations, the feedback was, we need a plan. We need some studying. We need someone to come back to us with a plan on how these expenses relate to each other. And how the townspeople can learn more about what the departments need before they make expenses. I see this committee as the effort to do exactly that. The makeup, I think there's a lot of different opportunities, and I think the planning should be done thoughtfully, as many people have commented tonight already, and carefully. And speed can be our enemy, but time is also our enemy right now, particularly with Wellington one station being semi out of service. So this process cannot be like the SBC. It is not as big a project. It is not as complex a project regulatory wise. So it doesn't need to be quite that complicated. The first stages of this project need to be happening right away. Otherwise, we go through next winter without Wellington one being able to be in their firehouse, because this stuff takes time. So I think agility has to have some level of priority in this process, not so fast that it's a poor planning process. Thank you.
And Ralph?
Uh, Ralph Tillis, forty-seven Villas Hill Road. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself before. With respect to this committee and my involvement in it, before. I totally agree if appointed to accept it, I wanna see the final copy of the charge. Uh, that's, that's approved by whoever would initiate it, and I would also suggest that, uh. A purview by the town's attorney might be appropriate to see if there are any statutory requirements for the makeup of a committee like this. I know that there is certainly for a school building committee by statute. They dictate the makeup. Uh, I doubt that that's the case here, but let's be sure. But I get the charge going. Let me see it, because i- if, if you were to choose to appoint me, I wanna understand exactly what I'm getting into. Because that list of items on your charge that you, you, um, read off tonight is a little bit more than I anticipated, so.
Okay.
I do wanna see that. Okay, thanks.
Christina?
Hi, um. Uh, I just wanted to say, this is a great example of. Of transparency and, or not being transparent, because this wasn't even on the agenda for tonight. Um, that we knew you were even having this conversation. I had no idea that this committee was being put together because I haven't heard of it. And I, I don't even know what it's called because you said it too fast in the beginning. So I'm trying to understand even what this is, and the, it, it, it needs to be, um. It needs to be looked at a little bit more before I think it's ready to go. And like Ralph said, like, people need to know what they're getting themselves into. Maybe it doesn't even need to be called a building committee. If all you're trying to do right now is determine what needs to be built. I don't know, but.
That's why we called it, I'm sorry, that's why we called it a facilities committee instead of a building committee.
Okay. See, I didn't even know that. That's, and because it wasn't on the agenda.
I, I, I know, and that's because I didn't get it together in time for the, the agenda, and I, again, I apologize. I'm trying to get stuff out ahead of time.
I know, and, and I know it's, I know it's very difficult.
A little bit of the occult here in the, in parliament procedure. Bring a motion to the table. That's the transparency. It gets made and seconded. Discussion ensues. It doesn't pass. That's the transparency part. So this motion, we could have brought it to a vote. We had voted no.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Right, we would have voted no, because there were too many questions, we're okay. But that's the first step in the transparency process. You bring a motion to the table in a public forum. Okay, now everyone knows about it. This will be published. The minutes will be published. That's okay. I mean, it's a little clumsy, maybe, and maybe it's not the way things have been done, and sure, just absolute room for improvement. You got three brand new people sitting here, but nobody to tell us, don't do that, do this instead, so. I think so. I, I, alright, so whatever. I think, you know, I think we can do better. Yes, we can do better. I, I, uh, see no more hands on the screen, but go ahead, Michelle.
I wanna encourage you to think a little bit broader, and not just in terms of people, but in terms of all the town's facilities. I don't think developing a building committee just for the emergency services and fire departments is gonna be adequate unless you look at what it's gonna cost to fix town hall. What other facilities are out there? Townspeople can't make a decision in absentia of adequate information. We learned that from the, the school building committee. What they wanna see is all of it, not just the fire departments, not just the schools, not just the town hall.
I, 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 I. I understand.
I'm not saying you have to do it all in one committee.
No, I, it's, it's just that.
Without the information, it's still not gonna have.
I, 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 I'm pushing this forward at a rather rapid rate, which is making people obviously uncomfortable. Because we have an emergent situation that one of the departments.
Well, speaking of the emergency situation, one of the departments, I mean, something else to consider as a group is, um, do we, do we wanna do these both together? But we wanna separate two departments apart. together, or do we wanna separate two departments apart?
I, I.
Approaches. I'm not quite sure of the right way to go. I know one is very, very, very important to move very quickly, and the other one frankly, isn't. So maybe we.
I. But. I've worked with both departments long enough. That if we wanna move with one, we have to move with the other.
There you go. They want.
I we're gonna disagree on that. That's, that's that's, right. But I, I disagree with that, so. So we have a motion to the table. I see no more discussion. All in favor of the table?
Bye.
Moving to.
People, this be on the agenda for the next meeting too?
Yes.
What, what would be, what would be, uh, the, you know, will, will be changes to it, or what are the steps that we as a, as a, as a county, I'm gonna take uh, before it's looked at again?
We're going to discuss with the town attorney and the town clerk, formation of a committee, and to see if we need a town meeting.
And we're gonna, we're gonna look at also, um, the composition of the committee as well.
Yes.
So would we, I guess at the next meeting, we would decide the composition, like how many of each kind of person and stuff like that? What do you think?
Sure. I, I would also, uh, at the next meeting, encourage that, that, I, I would like to have some members of the fire department here to speak, or the chiefs and presidents. Um. So, moving on to the next one. I would like to move to um, establish a tricentennial celebration committee. What?
Such a committee already exists. We just actually appoint members to it within the last year. So I would encourage you to go back and look. We just didn't actually appoint members, but it's outdated, so this will be redone.
I didn't even know. And I asked around and nobody had heard anything.
I'm trying to do some research on the minutes, see if I can help you find the time to do. It would have been since, uh, Mike McCook came on, within the last year.
All right, so seeing as how this is redundant, we can move along. If, if you could help me find those archives, I would, I would sincerely appreciate it. I was only moving forward on it because I didn't know that.
No, it's a great idea, but I think.
When we got three years. With three, yeah.
Lauren.
So. That brings us to old business. I have no old business. I think we beat President to Speak to death on most of these topics, but.
Of course not.
Let's, let's, uh, go ahead, Michelle, once again.
I wanna say thank you for your apology. It takes a big man to take ownership of a mistake. I would very much like it to be followed up with a commitment to do better and not have that happen again. And for further training, because it's not only you who needs this information. There's lots of boards and committees. There are new people on many committees, and this mistake could happen multiple times in multiple places. So
Yes.
There are, you know, lots of resources available, and not everybody takes advantage of it. But if you take leadership and strongly encourage others on the committee to do so.
I will look into that. Right now, I've gotta get people through sexual harassment training first, and then we will go to actual F O I D A training. And I believe I know where to find the
It's in the last, in the last. He's the director of education, but your town clerk.
Yes.
That's all.
Uh, let's go with Stephanie first.
Well, just the one thing that you didn't respond to that I just wanna make sure is on the radar is, um, correcting the town record.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thanks.
Erica Wyszynski, um, again, tonight, less than a month from, uh, your budget to be presented to the Board of Finance. There was no discussion publicly about the Board of Selectmen's budget. Um, it's significant in dollars. Um, and it's important that there be some discussion. Um, as far as I know and can find, there are no formal meetings that have been planned, agreed upon, or filed with the town clerk. Um, so I, I would ask that you, um, a- address that sooner rather than later. I certainly don't expect answers, uh, now. I appreciate your, um, maya call phone. Um, Peter, I know what it's like to sit in your seat. I know what it's like. Um. But this is the one thing that you should know, having sat on other committees. Um, and I said it to you before. I will say to you here formally on the record, if I can assist you in pointing in the right direction for some things, I'm happy to do so. I want your term to be successful so that our town can be successful.
I appreciate that.
Um, and I would like you to take a look at, um, the track to the town meeting, 'cause that could be significant to an ordinance um, that was voted on. I do not believe it was properly warned or executed, thus I, I outlined it in my comments.
All right.
And I'll have you to talk with you about it, but it questions the four um, votes that were taken at the town meeting, whether or not they are in fact valid. Two involve, um, two involve funding, maybe the third. One was an ordinance. I apologize, I remember.
Well, it was the, the fire, the volunteer firefighter tax.
Right, one was an ordinance.
And one of that ordinance, and then there was the, the plumbing problem.
It, it's important that while I think the intent of that meeting would not change, had it been properly warned, um, we need to make sure that's done right and, and so that it's, um, that, that there is nothing, uh, that can come back at us from that, especially because there wasn't ordinance um, in that. And I thank you for hearing, um, the public on, uh, the formation of such committee tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to talk to you about that because I did. I'll talk.
All right. So, any other president to speak online? I see no hands. Um. We did receive, um, one more piece of correspondence, and I apologize, I got the set of work. Eastern Highlands Health District has, has sent us a letter saying that, uh, we, we're gonna owe them money, that we do every year as part of the budget. That amount would be, uh, a lot.
It's a line item in your budget.
It's a line item in the budget. It's, uh, thirty two thousand nine hundred and twenty four dollars and seventy seven cents upcoming this year. Uh, thank you for serving on that board. I believe you're serving on that board until May? Because it's a person, person, it's a person appointment, not a position appointment?
It's not a seat appointment, and I will add that, um, we have an alternate seat available. Historically, we've only had one person attend, but certainly there is a second seat for an alternate. Um, it looks as though it's a regular seat. I did inquire, um, with, um, Rob Miller, and he said it is just an alternate, so I weren't able to attend. Um, and someone else could go to represent Willington, so anyone out there is interested.
Right. Anything for good and welfare? There is nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen.